All right, now if I could call a motion to install Treasurer Slavens as our temporary clerk for the evening.
I make a motion that Treasurer Slavens be appointed temporary secretary for this board meeting.
Clerk, yes.
Support.
Favor the motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Could you please call the roll?
Absolutely.
Treasurer Slavens.
Trustee Anthony.
Present.
Trustee Foster.
Good evening.
Trustee Gran Hudek.
Good evening.
Let the record reflect that Clerk Seacrest is out today. Treasurer Slavens is here. Trustee Snyderman.
I am here.
And Supervisor Williams.
Good evening. Call for a motion to approve the agenda with one minor adjustment.
Mr. Supervisor, I'd like to make a motion that we move from the consent calendar to the general calendar. Items G, A, B, and C, the League of Women Voters Resolution, the June 2019 Pride Month Resolution, and the Lions Club Resolution to, sorry, to G, A, B, and C.
Second.
Favor the motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Mr. Supervisor, I make a motion that we approve the minutes. May 28th, 19.
Second.
Favor the motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Now would be the time in the agenda for any citizens' non-agenda items. If anybody is here that would like to address the group, we could do that now. Because we moved the League of Women Voters item to the general calendar, if you prefer to wait until we make that presentation with Anne Marie, we could do that all together.
Hi, yeah.
Yeah, then it's more relaxed and you don't have the pressure of the clock to worry about. Very good. All right. Is there any other individuals that would like to make public comment for an item that's not on the agenda this evening? Is there anybody else that would like to make public comment at this time? Okay, seeing none.
Mr. Supervisor, I make a motion, we pay the bills.
Support.
Favor paying the bills again this month, please state aye.
Aye.
Very good, motion carries. And now we have a special presentation up front which is going to be the 2018 audit. And we have Director Trumbull who is this evening, both of our representatives.
All right, thank you very much. With us tonight, we have Alicia Watkins, Melanie Crowther, and Stacy Reeves from Plant Moran helping to present the audit this year. Before they get started, I want to thank Sarah and Carolyn. Sarah really takes the lead on the audit each year. She works a lot of hours, she takes ownership, and as you'll see, once again, not to steal their thunder, the whole audit department or finance department and township really did a great job again this year on the audit. So I really appreciate their help and I appreciate Alicia and Melanie for making the process relatively smooth. A painful process relatively painless. So with that, I will turn it over to Alicia.
Painless as an audit can be, right Wendy?
That's right.
Thank you. And good evening, board members. Thank you for having us with you this evening. Before I introduce my team, I want to acknowledge one of our team members who isn't here today. And that is Mike Swartz, who has been the partner on this engagement for many years now. He's actually retiring effective June 30. And he senses regrets that he could not be here this evening. He did have a conflict, but I, he, I just wanted to pass along his sentiment. I know it's just been an absolute joy for him to have worked on this account for so many years. And he wants to thank you all for the great experience. So we look forward to continuing on with a seamless transition as we look forward to Mike being able to enjoy his retirement. So with me here today, in Mike's place, a much better looking version of Mike, Stacy Reeves.
Not Mike.
Stacy Reeves is actually the leader for our governmental practice throughout our firm. So we look forward to being able to bring her out to clients as often as we can. And then Melanie Crowther is the manager over the engagement. I want to echo Wendy's sentiment and just thank your team and acknowledge them. There is just a tremendous amount of work that goes into closing out your year-end books and records and preparing for an audit. And then after you do that, dealing with us being onsite for many, many weeks auditing that information. So you really do have a best-in-class team, and that is evidenced by the results of our audit, which are, you know, not just that you received a qualified opinion, which is the highest level of assurance that you can receive on your financial statements. In addition, we identified no issues with your numbers, so we had no proposed changes to the numbers. We identified no internal control deficiencies. It is incredibly rare to have an audit that clean, particularly for a community of your size. So hats off to your team for a very well-done job. Just a couple other items I want to mention. Typically when we're standing up here, we also have a single audit to present, which is an audit of your federal awards. A few years back, the federal government changed the threshold. So now if you receive under $750,000 of federal awards, and it's really based on how much you spend, but if you spend less than $750,000 a year, you aren't required to receive a single audit. So this is the first year, probably in a little while, that your team hasn't had to have a single audit. So we won't be reporting on that this year because that was not required. We did also perform, we often, as you probably recall, we'll visit some of the remote locations on occasion and do some cash and internal control review procedures. And so we did that again this year. We visited Pheasant Run and spent some time with your team there. They're doing a really great job. We expect usually that when we go out to remote sites, there's going to be a lot of internal control things that we identify. So the further away you get from the mothership, usually we find those things. That wasn't the case here. So well done for that team as well. Just a few very minor recommendations that we did leave with management for that. So following our audit, the deliverables that we do have are the letter that you should have in your board packet from Plant Moran. We also handed out today a graph package that Melanie's going to cover, which just really highlights the financial statements. And we're going to use the graph package in place of this very large CAFR that your team prepares to cover the numbers just in summary form. So we'll really just cover the slide deck and then the letter. The letter really consists of two components. The first section is our required communication, which is a follow-up to that letter that we sent out at the beginning of the audit process. And really all it's telling you is that we followed our audit plan and that really there was no exceptions or issues during our audit. The second part of the letter is a combination of legislative items that we just wanted to make available to you to read at your leisure, informational items that might be of interest to you, and then also some upcoming accounting pronouncements that your team will be working through over the next couple of years. We didn't intend to go into the letter into detail unless you have questions or have something you would like for us to cover. Dive right into the numbers. Before I turn it over to Melanie, I just want to give Stacy an opportunity, if you want to say anything to the group, as our industry leader, please do so.
Thank you very much. It is a pleasure to be here tonight in Mike's stead. And did want to congratulate you on the audit results. To have an unmodified opinion is something that is extremely important as you go through and look at different opportunities and things, and it really does set the community apart. But also to not have findings or internal control deficiencies is something that many communities cannot speak. That that's the case. And to be able to do that in a year where there have been significant new standards that have come about and significant new legislative items that you're dealing with speaks even more highly of your team. So congratulations, it's well-deserved. The other thing that I wanted to mention is Alicia mentioned the transition. And we do think it will be a smooth transition because as of July 1st, Alicia will be a partner at Plant Moran.
Congratulations.
Also very well-deserved and not easily attained. And we're very, very happy to have her as part of the partnership and also think that she will do a great job serving you in the future. I'm going to let Melanie cover the graphs. If you have any questions, feel free to reach out and ask any questions.
This is where I see if I can. Looks like it's just turning on. This is where Melanie fails. Here we go. I'm able to work the system. Normally I have Tim help me out, so this year Sarah helped me out to make sure the system was working. So I'm going to cover the graph packet. It's going to do a very high-level view of the financials. So if you have any further questions on the CAFR, feel free to stop me. Or if you have any questions throughout the graph presentation, feel free to stop me at any point. Or if you want to save those to the end as well, I'll take questions at the end. So the first graph we're going to look at, it's going to be the general fund revenue. And this is the standalone general fund. If you're looking at your CAFR in the front part of the CAFR, it'll be the combined general fund. The township budget's on the standalone general fund, so that's what we're reporting out today. So you'll see some differences in the numbers. The general fund revenue budget information is included in the back of the CAFR, so that's what we're reporting on today. And as you can see, general fund revenue increased to 28.4 million. And the largest increase is going to be in your property tax revenue, as Canton is still seeing large development. A lot of other communities are not seeing that development, so that property tax number is increasing, but it's taking a lot longer to get back up to those high levels. And we'll go over the property tax timing delay a little bit later in another slide. And then the other significant revenue stream for the township is going to be state shared revenue, and we do have another slide on that as well. The other revenue streams were pretty consistent year-over-year, and your total revenue increased by about 3% from last year. Talking about property taxes, so there is a timing lag in property taxes. You're not going to see those increases straightaway. And if you look at the graph presentation, so the budget year 2018 is actually based on the assessment date of 2016, which is then levied in 2017, and then actually comes into revenue in 2018. So a lot of communities, even though they're starting to see taxable values increase, it's taken a couple of years for that increase to come through just because of the timing lag of when it's assessed versus when it can be recorded as revenue. So looking at 2018, the taxable value is going to be an increase of about 4.9% from previous years. Tax year 2019, for budget year 2019, it's going to be a more of an increase of 5.2%. Now, this is before any adjustments or any MTT adjustments, so there could be some changes in here. Budget year 2020 is looking like a projected increase of about 5.6 million, 5.6%, not million. 5.6%. And then 2021 is going to be higher to about 3.3%. And again, this is more due to the new building in Canton. Not necessarily everybody's taxable values are suddenly jumping up 5.6%. So just knowing that that increase in there and some other communities are not seeing this increase. Looking at state shared revenue, this is based on the state's fiscal year. So there's going to be a little bit of a timing delay between Canton's and the state's. And looking at this, the state's fiscal year is fiscal year 18. There was an increase of about 2.6%. And the projected increase for 2019 is 5.5%. Now, with state shared revenue, there's two pieces currently, the CVT and constitutional revenue. You have to have certain requirements for CVT. So far Canton has always met those requirements. And this graph is based on 2019, Canton also meeting those requirements for CVT. For 2018, the total combined state shared revenue was about 7.6 million. And again, this is based on the state's tax fiscal year and not Canton's. So there'll be a little bit of a timing delay. If you looked in your CAFR, you would see a slightly different number. Any questions on revenues before I switch over to expenditures?
Looks to me as if we are going to be back to 2007 taxable value next year, either '20 or '21. Because we were $4 billion. It looks like next year, we're finally back to 2007 revenue.
Yeah, I think this year, we're pretty close to back to where we were due to the growth.
What are you using for that?
Yeah, we are about $4 million.
From memory.
Four billion, yeah. So between this year and next year, we'll be kind of back there.
When we were first doing these graphs, I think we were projecting multiple years out that we would get back to that 27 value. And that's also without including inflation. So switching focus over to general fund expenditures. Expenditures did increase this year, and they were about 29.5 million, or a 15.2% increase. The largest part of the increase was actually in transfers. And the transfers were transfers that on Gatsby 3054 analysis, they're actually eliminated. So they're between funds that, once we prepare the CAFR, they get eliminated because they're between two funds that are within the general fund. The largest transfer was between the Community Improvement Fund and the general fund. And that increased to 5.2 million. Last year was about 2.1 million. And that is for operations, unless there was anything additional in there, Wendy, that you saw. I think it was mostly for operations, but as it's on a, as it gets eliminated as part of the final CAFR, we don't have to do as much auditing, but I believe it was for operations for computing.
No, it was to set aside money for the capital improvement that was left over from 2017's audit. That we did a budget adjustment in the middle of the year to transfer that over. You're welcome.
But yes, if you actually looked at the transfers footnote, that transfer would not be included within your CAFR. But on a budget basis, and when we're just looking at the general fund, it's going to be included within that. But that was your significant increase. The other expenditures were very consistent from year to year. Switching focus now to the fund balance. So looking at this, we normally project out your current year expenditures compared to your unassigned fund balance and determine how much of your fund balance is, if you were to receive no revenue, how much of your expenditures would you be able to cover? So we've got that for 2018, the unassigned fund balance was 5.2 million, and that would cover 17.6% of the current expenditures.
Target is still 15, eh? Yes.
That's kind of hovered around that 20 to 17%, but the target is 15%. So the township is above that targeted value. So everything I mentioned so far, we've talked about revenues increasing. There's a lot of new development with the property taxes, state shared revenue is going up. We did also want to point out there are some long-term obligations that the township has, that the township has been very proactive in doing multi-year budgeting and making sure you're well-positioned to address some of these legacy costs. The first one being pension expense. And if you look from 2013, pension expense was only 3.2 million. And then in 2018, pension expense, which would mostly be contributions to the pension, there's a couple of adjustments for Gatsby 68, but most of it's going to be contributions, is now looking at 5.4 million. So this is a trend that's gradually increasing. All of the communities are seeing a similar phase of these pension expenses increasing. And so making sure that you're doing your budgeting and looking at these long-term expenditures.
And if I could, if I could pipe in while we have this graph up. We recently received a letter from MERS where they have, they redid their experience study. They look at that every five years to determine if their assumptions are accurate. Based on the actual interest rate earnings, they are lowering the assumed rate of return, which is going to increase our contributions moving forward as well. They did also lower what they are considering future payroll increases as well a little bit, which should offset that. But coupled with the fact, I'm not sure what this is going to mean for us yet, but they're also looking at the mortality tables and people living longer, and that will also raise it. So while this trend has gone up pretty drastically, even after we made all of our concessions, we were able to cut our pension costs, it's gone up pretty quick. And we're expecting it to go up again in 2021 is when they said those changes are going to affect us. So just kind of keep that in the back of your head.
Looking at two of the significant long-term liabilities that the township would have, and this would be on the government-wide statements, so your full accrual statements. The largest one being OPEB, which is your post-employment healthcare costs. The liability as of 12/31/18 is sitting at 45 million. And then we've given the breakdown of general employees, not general fund necessarily. General employees would be approximately 15.4 million of that liability. Fire, 10.6 million. Police, 15.2 million. And water and sewer, approximately 3.8 million. So a very significant liability that, and has been steadily increasing even with the various concessions that the township has been making just due to looking at the mortality tables, looking at the rising costs in healthcare, is a significant liability that all communities are facing and having to look at and work out how to pay off these long-term obligations. The other one that we've also included in here would be pension. Pension is sitting at 42.5 million. Again, the township has been strategically looking at benefits and trying to reduce that liability. A lot of other communities are seeing larger jumps in their pension liabilities just because of the difference in mortality tables experience that they're noticing that it's something that all communities are facing and having to look at. It's the best way to combat this. And again, we split out the liability based on the different employee classes. General employees would be about 8.8 million. Fire would be 12.8 million. Police would be 17.6 million. And water and sewer would be down at 3.2 million. So significant numbers that the township is going to have to look into funding in future years. We also broke out this graph into a pie chart, just so you can see the percentages based on the different classes. And looking at the OPEB liability, general would be about 34% of the liability. Fire, 24%. Police, 34. And water and sewer, 8% for OPEB. And then for pension, water and sewer about 8%. General, 21%. Fire, 30%. And police at 41%. So rather large liabilities that we just wanted to show that the township is. And I'll strip more in here. Longer budgeting has been paying off. The township has been looking at these benefits and other things and making sure that every year when I come up here, the expenditures are always within budget. We never have to have a comment about that the expenditures are not within budget. Most of the time, they're well under budgeted, as the township is really looking at ways to make sure that they're able to combat these legacy costs. Development within the township has enabled the township to be strongly positioned to look into these legacy costs. But they are still out there. And the township is also looking into the capital improvement project and making sure that you're set to make those capital expenditures, which at the moment is expected to exceed, well, above 10 million. The township's still looking into what that number is, but there is also a significant capital assets that have been prolonged, delayed improvements that now is the time that some of those improvements need to be made.
We know we're approaching 14 million-ish.
We're approaching more like 20 million-ish at this point.
Everything. Well, are you pulling into that public safety or no?
Public safety renovations should, full remodel not be done, based on the current building. Those have been worked into that. Has. Not the, not the total renovation, but just to get the building up to the needs that they have to just live within what they currently have.
Okay, good, good, good. Okay.
That is all I had on the graphs, unless there was any questions on finances, anything I covered in the graph packet.
John, you usually have a question? No questions this year?
One question I've always asked Mike for the last 11 years.
Alicia starts.
Report is complicated, but accurate and well done. And that's a credit to our people as well as yours. But in rating or ranking, or I guess rating the township from a fiscal standpoint, if you were to go 1 to 2, A to B, compared to other communities of equal size, are we in good shape, bad shape, no shape?
I'm going to give you a couple of different answers. So I'm going to, I'm going to first rate you relative to sort of the efforts around fiscal responsibility, best practices, and how your team has done in making difficult decisions, planning for the future, and kind of doing the right thing to position yourself. Best in class all day, you guys get an A there. There's no question about that. Nothing that has happened here is by accident in terms of where your numbers are or how you're positioned. You're not out of the woods yet, so that's why I'm sort of bifurcating my answer here because just like your peers, some of them who are kind of struggling just to maintain their budgets, you have some of those same problems that they do relative to legacy costs and deferred capital. So for that, I do give you a lower grading because a lot of that's under control, but it's something that you have to deal with. So Melanie talked about $45 million pension number unfunded, a $45 million OPEB number unfunded. And it's not that you've done something wrong, it's just something you have to deal with. So relative to overall fiscal health, I heard almost $20 million now on deferred capital and possibly growing. You know, it's maybe a B, B+? Probably still better positioned than some, but certainly not out of the woods. So I'll, so that's, I'll leave it there unless you want me to say more, but I kind of gave you the two-part answer.
These are issues that are manageable with good practices and...
Correct. And you're doing, you're doing what you can to manage them. And because you position yourself so well, you're able to do more than some are, frankly. I mean, we have clients that have those unfunded liabilities that are several hundred million dollars.
Followed in Mike's footsteps. I couldn't get him to go 1 to 2 or A to B.
I thought maybe you changed your question a little bit. I was trying to remember.
We switched it up.
Of course.
I was just wondering, in terms of the liabilities, are you seeing any other cities or towns out there that don't have this much or have a lot less than this that are, are we're just...
There's very, I mean, there's what, like maybe 1 to 3 communities who are fully funded?
It's a very significant range. We're seeing some communities that haven't set aside any funds for retiree healthcare because they don't have the growth capabilities. So the communities that are fully built out are very much struggling with the finance model, the taxable value trend for them. You mentioned that by the end of this year, maybe next year, you're going to be back to where you were pre-economic collapse. There are many communities that are looking at a 10-year horizon to be where they were pre-2008 just because they don't have the growth. And so they're limited to that Hadley or inflation. Inflation's been less than 2%. So it really does run the gamut. The important thing is to have a process for evaluating it, figuring out how to address it, and then starting to set aside funding for it. And again, as Alicia said, you have been best in class with how you're addressing the issues that are coming before you. So you can't single-handedly change the Michigan finance model. No community can. But you know what the weaknesses are related to the model, and you're addressing them.
Great report.
That guy down there. I didn't just have a baby. Thank you. Thank you for the report. And you can see what we prepare for in case we don't like the report. So, but I just had a couple of questions, and Director Trumbull, maybe they're more for you. But in terms of the numbers that we saw with the millage rates, does that include the increase starting this year in the road millage? Or is that not general fund money? So would that, it didn't seem like that was included in the numbers that were going to, that were going up.
Mr. Report, are you referring to the taxable value?
Yeah, are you referring to this slide?
Probably, yeah.
This is just the taxable value. This does not include the millages.
It's the base. It's not the actual dollars collected on those. Okay.
Correct. I would not expect that large of an increase for the roads millage because the roads millage is subject to Hadley, the Hadley rollback. And our inflation will have exceeded that. So our millage will, we will not be assessing this year, I would be, next year, December 1st, I would not expect that we would be assessing 1.45 mills. It'll be something, it'll be rolled back to something less than that.
Oh, really?
The remainder, the police, the fire, and the general fund. And because general fund, we're not at our Hadley max, those can still go up by this 5% because we're not at the maximum that we are allowed to levy for the general fund. But the roads millage, we are, and I will, I will expect that to get rolled back. So we're only increasing by inflation, by 2.4%, I think is what it is.
Okay. And then when I look at the expense chart and the revenue chart, it looks like for 2018, we exceeded revenues with expenses. It was like 2.8. And I know that what the audit captures is usually different than what we capture when we do our budgeting. So is that...
No, the reason for that is that $3 million transfer that we made to the community improvement, which was from the last year. So we have that in the, in the general fund fund balance remaining out there. And we just transferred out of that fund balance into the Community Improvement Fund, which is what the, which was what the intention was. So it was okay that it, we budgeted to do that.
Okay, I just want to make sure that was clear as people can look at that and see that.
Yeah, without that, we would have broken just about even this year.
And then lastly, the $45 million retirement liabilities, the two columns. I know we separately report... I know we separately report at different time in the year, the calculations that come from the state and et cetera, as to what, how we're doing against those. And so what do those numbers mean compared to what we talk about later?
So we, Public Act two oh two, we had to file some paperwork with the state of Michigan, and we, we did not have to file a waiver. So we were within the limit, the legal limits that the state has authorized as far as trying to figure out how we're going to get out of this deficit, because they have some clauses in there that I won't get into, which is why we were able to meet those. We also are in the process of getting our most recent actuarial evaluation for OPEB. We're working through a couple of changes that we got it. We had to go back and forth with them a little bit, and they're tweaking some of those numbers. I would expect that liability to stay pretty close to where it is this year. They were, had anticipated some large, um, medical, uh, medical insurance cost increases, and they didn't pan out as high as they thought they were. So we think our liability is going to be about even from where it was a couple of years ago, plus with the added contributions that we made. So our funded status and that will actually improve.
Will improve.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that will definitely be improved, and we should have that report to you guys, I would think, within the next month.
Great. Thank you.
I don't have any questions or comments beyond Carolyn and Sarah and Wendy, obviously the entire team. Your entire teams did a fantastic job. I am a little nervous that each year you raise the bar a little bit higher. So to have no findings this year, it's like, how are you going to beat that next year? That's incredible. So well done, guys. Well done, everybody. So, um, that concludes the audit presentation. If we could have in a single, uh, we've got the single item now as part of the consent calendar that's left. So if you'll read that in a second.
To receive and place and file the two thousand and eighteen Township Comprehensive Annual Finance Report.
Support.
Favor the motion as presented? Please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you very much, Alicia. Well done. Okay, uh, we moved those items down to the general, so I'm going to pop back up to promotion recognition, and this is a little out of the, the ordinary. Josh, are you still in the room? Do you want to join me? Because this is not a normal presentation we're doing. Typical, I should think. It's very normal.
So, please, please update the public knowledge.
Clerk Ziegler is unable to be with us this evening. So normally what we would be doing is presenting the badge as well as doing a formal swearing-in. So what we're going to do is go ahead and present the badge because, um, we have, uh, Lieutenant Beale's got some, Beale's got some family with him this evening, and maybe he can introduce them. But, so we're going to do the, the formal swearing-in at another time. Right now, what we'd like to do is just recognize Joseph Beale is being recognized tonight for his promotion to the rank of lieutenant with the Canton Police Department. Joe was hired in Canton in two thousand and four as a police officer, promoted to the rank of sergeant in two thousand and fourteen. In his new position, Lieutenant Beale will serve as a platoon commander and patrol division overseeing daily operations of a shift made up of sergeants, patrol officers, and PSSOs. In addition, he will be responsible for providing direction, motivation, training of subordinate personnel working toward accomplishment of the department's established goals and objectives. Joe is joined this evening by his wife Carrie and his daughters Caitlin, Sydney, and Madison. Hi, guys. Thanks for coming. Uh, Joseph, lieutenant?
Thanks, sir.
Congratulations, sir. And if, uh, Josh will present the badge.
Congratulations. Thanks, sir.
All right. I'm gonna turn it up. And we'll schedule for you a return visit. Is there anything you'd like to say, sir? No? All right. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Now, the next item in the agenda this evening is going to be, um, a presentation and consider approval of resolution recognizing the hundred-year anniversary of the passage of the Nineteenth Amendment granting women the right to vote. And presenting this evening is...
Make the motion.
Uh, yes, yeah, please go ahead.
So for G, G A, I move to approve the following resolution recognizing a hundred-year anniversary of the passage of the Nineteenth Amendment granting women the right to vote.
I can.
Okay. And in summary, uh, let's see. We'll go right into it. So Anne Marie, you have a presentation, and you have a couple, uh, guests that are going to speak this evening. So I'll let you, um, make those presentations at this time.
So this is a resolution recognizing the one hundred-year anniversary of the passage of the Nineteenth Amendment granting women the right to vote. Whereas our founding documents declare that government derives its powers from the consent of the governed, and whereas Congress passed the Nineteenth Amendment to the Constitution of the United States guided by the shared ideals of freedom, sovereignty, democracy, civil liberties, and individual rights, and whereas Michigan's male voters approved a state constitutional amendment by nearly fifty-five percent in nineteen eighteen, enfranchising women and allowing them to vote for the first time in nineteen nineteen, and whereas from nineteen nineteen to nineteen twenty, the sixty-sixth Congress debated and state legislatures considered an amendment to the Constitution to provide suffrage for women, and whereas on May twenty-first, nineteen nineteen, the House of Representatives approved and proposed amendment, followed by Senate a few weeks later on June fourth, nineteen nineteen, whereas Michigan was the second state to ratify the National Suffrage Amendment on June tenth, nineteen nineteen, and whereas the Nineteenth Amendment was ratified and became law on August twenty-sixth, nineteen twenty, allowing Michigan women to vote for president for the first time in the November second, nineteen twenty elections. And the introduction, passage, and ultimate ratification of the Nineteenth Amendment were the culmination of decades of work and struggle by advocates for the rights of women across the United States and worldwide, and whereas the ratification of the Nineteenth Amendment ensured women could more fully participate in our democracy and fundamentally change the role of women in the civic life of our nation. And now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Trustees of the Charter Township of Canton does hereby recognize the one hundred-year anniversary of the passage of the Nineteenth Amendment granting women the right to vote on June fourth, nineteen nineteen, and acknowledges that legitimate government requires the consent of the governed and that such consent is available through democratic election.
So I'd first like to introduce to you Angela Ryan from the League of Women Voters, the President. She's going to read a little bit of the history for you.
Get to keep that. All right. Ooh, I get a gift. I wasn't expecting that. I'm giving you the Cliff Notes version of sixty-eight years of Michigan history this evening. This is women's suffrage in Michigan. It started in eighteen forty-nine when there was a Michigan Senate Committee that proposed a universal women's suffrage amendment. They didn't act upon it, though, because of what they described as the unusualness and needlessness of women getting this right. Forty-four years later, because, you know, why not, a similar amendment was introduced in the legislature. This time, it was defeated in the House. Between eighteen sixty-seven and nineteen thirteen, women's suffrage was introduced at two state constitutional conventions and was on the ballot three times. It failed to pass in all instances. Michigan women obtained partial voting rights, though, during the same time period. In eighteen sixty-seven, the legislature granted women taxpayers the right to vote for school trustees. Women taxpayers, probably not too many of them in eighteen sixty-seven. Clara Arthur, a women's suffrage activist, helped change the state constitution in nineteen oh six so that women could vote on tax and bond issues. And in May of nineteen seventeen, the governor signed a bill allowing women to vote in presidential elections. Finally, on November fifth, nineteen eighteen, after sixty-eight years of effort, the suffrage amendment passed in Michigan. And as Anne Marie mentioned, when the Nineteenth Amendment passed Congress on June fifth of nineteen nineteen, Michigan was the second state to ratify, and it only took them five days after it passed for them to do that. Now, I'd like to take a minute to tell you about a few of the other women who were involved in the women's suffrage movement. First, there's Sojourner Truth. We know her as a slave, former slave, who spoke around the country on emancipation, but in eighteen fifty, she started to include the cause of women's rights in her lectures. Emily Burton Ketchum was a founder of Grand Rapids Suffrage Groups. Beginning in eighteen seventy-three, she worked for women's suffrage at the local, state, and national levels. She laid the groundwork for suffragists who followed her. Her husband supported her work and proudly noted that on a trip to Idaho, they passed through three states where equal suffrage was the reality. Mae Stocking Nags was a woman well ahead of her time. While she was on cross-country speaking engagements, her husband stayed home with four children. In eighteen eighty-seven, so that tells you how long ago that was, she addressed a committee of legislators from several states. She noted that property-holding women were being taxed without representation, and the interests of men and women were identical. Apparently, our arguments fell on deaf ears. Lucia Grimes was one of the beneficiaries of Emily Ketchum's earlier work. Building on what she'd learned about the suffrage movement, she developed an index-card filing system with information on each of the Michigan legislators. She noted whether he supported or opposed women's suffrage, and included data on his history, financial standing, political affiliations, political and social interests, and probably the most important one, the influences to which he was most susceptible. Lucia never abandoned her efforts for women's rights. In nineteen seventy-four, two days before her ninety-seventh birthday, she gave a speech supporting the Equal Rights Amendment. The women I mentioned are all enshrined in the Michigan Women's Hall of Fame in Lansing. I encourage everybody to visit the Hall of Fame as we celebrate the hundredth anniversary of women's suffrage in Michigan this year and the hundredth anniversary of the passage of the Nineteenth Amendment next year. Thank you. Should I introduce Laura? And we have one other league member who would like to speak about the Equal Rights Amendment.
Laura, who is coming up, Laura Calo, is in the Michigan Women's Hall of Fame for her work on the ERA.
The Equal Rights Amendment, or ERA, finishes up unfinished business begun by the suffragists for mothers. Its present wording states equality of rights under the law shall not be denied or abridged by the United States or by any state on account of sex. This means that a law that discriminates on account of a person's sex would be just as unconstitutional as a law that discriminates on account of a person's race, religion, or national origin. The ERA was first proposed in nineteen twenty-three by suffragist Alice Paul because she realized that voting is the only constitutionally protected right that women have. It was introduced into each succeeding Congress until it was passed with bipartisan support by the House in nineteen seventy-one and the Senate in nineteen seventy-two. However, Congress imposed an arbitrary and unnecessary time limit of seven years. By nineteen seventy-six, thirty-five states had ratified. However, it was clear the ERA needed more time due to organized right-wing opposition. Congress accepted the time, extended the time limit three years to June of nineteen eighty-two. Unfortunately, no more states ratified, and pundits declared the ERA dead, and we thought we would have to start all over. But that thinking changed in nineteen ninety-two when Congress accepted the ratification of the Madison Amendment that is concerned with congressional pay raises. It was first proposed in seventeen eighty-nine. This amendment was finally ratified two hundred and three years later. After seeking a legal opinion, ERA supporters developed the three-state strategy, asking Congress to accept the ratification of three more states. It was later changed to, uh, ask Congress to remove the time limit altogether. This development jump-started action in unratified states. There were years of disappointment, but activists never gave up. In twenty seventeen, Nevada became the thirty-sixth state to ratify. Last year, Illinois became the thirty-seventh. This year, the Virginia Senate ratified the ERA with bipartisan support, but it was stalled in their House of Delegates. But ERA activists are not deterred. Virginia will elect their entire state legislature in the fall of this year, and ERA is definitely an issue. But on April thirtieth, a House U.S. Subcommittee held the first hearing on the ERA in thirty-six years. Most of the hearings centered on the time limit, and many of those present argued that the time limit was arbitrary and should be removed, uh, saying that if Congress has the power to add a time limit, it has the power to remove it. And incidentally, this past Sunday, late-night comedian John Oliver gave a fifteen-minute pitch for ratifying the ERA on his show called Last Week Tonight. So in conclusion, the pundits were wrong. The ERA is very much alive. It is a legal phoenix. Barry it in can Congress, set an arbitrary deadline, block it in committee, throw in a fear-mongering conservative female icon and religious right zealots, and still, from its ashes, it will rise because it is a matter of simple justice that's long overdue.
Thank you very much. We have the resolution, which has been read, and, um, we had the motion by Diane to read it into the formal record, so those in favor of the motion as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay. Next item on the agenda would be, we have, uh, another motion, please.
I move to approve the following resolution proclaiming June two thousand and nineteen Pride Month in Canton Township.
And we have Summer Foster, who's going to present, uh, a resolution.
I'll second.
Of course. Thank you, Stephen.
Resolution proclaiming June two thousand and nineteen Pride Month. Whereas lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgender people are family, friends, neighbors, and coworkers who contribute meaningfully to the community, and whereas LGBT pride events are held in June to commemorate the June twenty-eighth, nineteen sixty-nine Stonewall riots that were also a catalyst for establishing safe places for LGBT folks to be open about their sexual orientation and gender identity without fear of being arrested or jailed, and whereas the fight for dignity, equality, and inclusion for LGBT people has been hard-fought in the streets and in the courts in this country, and whereas these fights for inclusion have made much progress towards changing hearts and minds of people in many parts of the world, and whereas on June thirteenth, two thousand and fourteen, the Canton Township Board added Chapter thirty-six to the Canton Code of Ordinance related to sustaining a safe, welcoming, and inclusive community for all residents regardless of race, religion, color, national origin, sex, age, HIV status, sexual orientation, or gender identity, and whereas on June twenty-fourth, two thousand and fourteen, Canton Township passed a resolution calling on Michigan State Legislature to amend the Elliot Larson Civil Rights Act to include protections for LGBT Michiganders, and whereas in two thousand and eighteen, Canton Leisure Services launched the You Belong Here Initiative as part of the commitment to honoring diversity, inclusion, and equity while remaining dedicated to a mission that promotes a spirit of mutual respect, feelings of belonging, and a greater sense of community for all our neighbors. And whereas in two thousand and nineteen, Canton Township will be supporting the first annual Canton Pride Festival sponsored by P-Flag Plymouth Canton, the PCEP Gender and Sexuality Alliance, the Ruth Ellis Center, and the Band Music Appreciation Studio. And whereas Canton Pride Festival will be held on Sunday, June twenty-third, two thousand and nineteen, from three PM to five PM at Canton's Village Theater at Cherry Hill as a free event where everyone is welcome. Now therefore be it resolved that the Canton Board of Trustees, or that the Board of Trustees of Canton Charter Township does hereby proclaim June two thousand and nineteen as Pride Month in Canton Township to celebrate LGBT members of the community as an affirmation of the township's commitment to protect and serve everyone who resides in Work Center visits Canton without discrimination, as well as its belief in the dignity, equality, and constitutional and civil rights of all people. And be it further resolved that the Board of Trustees of the, of the Charter Township of Canton reaffirms its resolution passed in two thousand and fourteen, calling for immediate action by the Michigan Legislature and the governor to introduce, adopt, and enroll with immediate effect legislation providing for real protection against discrimination of all residents of the state by amending the Elliot Larson... the Elliot Larson Civil Rights Act to include protections for physical or mental limitation, disability, source of income, family responsibilities, educational association, sexual orientation, gender identity, or expression, or HIV status. And be it further resolved that the Clerk of the Charter Township of Canton is directed to submit a copy of this resolution to the Office of the Governor, Senate Majority and Minority Leaders, and the House Speaker and Minority Leader.
George? We have George Belvich, who's the President of Plymouth Canton PFLAG, and I'd like to give you this resolution.
Thank you, Summer. Thank you very much.
George and a couple of other people that want to speak.
Thank you, Summer, very much, and thank you to the Canton Trustees for this terrific resolution. I was in the room five years ago when you passed the ordinance, and the month before that, we started our PFLAG chapter in Plymouth. So, good things are happening in the community for LGBTQ people. PFLAG, if you don't know, is the oldest LGBTQ organization in the country with over 400 chapters nationwide. Plymouth Canton's chapter started in 2014, as I said, and our main, our main work as a chapter is to educate, advocate, and support LGBTQ individuals in the community. We've done considerable amount of work in the schools this past semester, and we are so excited that we are able to host the first annual LGBTQ Canton Pride at the Village Theater. And I would be remiss if I didn't let you know, I hope this, I hope you will take this message to him that your employee, Joe Kevoryak, at the Village Theater is a remarkable young man, and it's only because of his passion and his interest and his technological skills and all the good stuff he has that has enabled us to come to the Village Theater with this program. I hope it's one that will grow and get better and better every year. I could see a marvelous festival there in the Cherry Hill Village Theater that the LGBT community would love to participate in and be a part of. So, thank you very much for this honor. I do have some bling to give you, so that you are at least, you know, can give some information about our event that you can take with you and distribute to friends. Bumper stickers for those that care for those, and Love Wins stickers, and PFLAG stickers. Pass those out, please. And last but not least, our wristbands came in today, so you each get a wristband.
Good timing.
Okay? So, pass those out, Summer, to those that care to have them.
Thank you.
Thank you, George.
George? Okay. Another, is somebody else to speak?
Um, Ellie Jackson?
Oh, Brian.
I'm Brian Smith. I've been a Canton resident for 27 years and served as the pastor at Geneva Church. I just want to commend the Board for passing the resolution. Part of my work as a pastor is anchored in the belief that a person's well-being is based both on physical and spiritual health, and I've come to see that it's also true of larger communities, especially like Canton where you have incredible, wonderful physical assets. We heard some great reports from your audit. There's tremendous housing here, retail, a lot of great places to work and the services that are offered. But a great community doesn't just have those things, it also has a spiritual vibrancy and a spiritual conscience and health, and it's been a great joy to see these steps taken over time that make it clear that this is a community for all people. And that people aren't, we're not just diverse now, but we also, in our diversity, want to include a sense that everybody really, truly does belong, and I think that helps to create a community that's not just excellent in terms of its assets, but also moves towards what Dr. King called the beloved community, where we all belong, we all care for each other, we all want to make sure everybody's life is lived to the best possible way. And I think this resolution publicly states that in a way that's important, to make it clear to our own residents, but also beyond Canton, that this is a community that values these things. So, I think it helps to promote the wonderful spiritual progress that Summer laid out as she went through the record there. So, thank you for being a part of that. Thank you for approving this.
Nobody should have to hide who they are or who they love, but people have been hiding their sexuality and gender identity since the beginning of time. Even today, it is illegal to be gay in 73 countries across the world. In some of these countries, people are killed for simply falling in love with someone of the same sex. That is not the case in the United States, though many LGBT individuals try to hide their sexuality and gender identity in an attempt to circumvent discrimination and hate crimes. These same people do not talk about core aspects of themselves because if they did, they could be kicked out of their homes, shunned by their friends, family, and community. Making June officially Pride Month in Canton will send a message to LGBT individuals that they are safe in this community, that despite the roadblocks that they have had to overcome, Canton will accept them and love them for who they are. Thank you.
Comments? No? Go ahead, and we have the resolution.
Thank you very much.
As presented. Those in favor of the resolution as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, guys, very much. All right. We have another resolution that we would like to cover at this time. A resolution in recognition of the Canton Lions Club for 50-plus years of service in Canton community, and Trustee Anthony will read that resolution. But first, John, if we could allow Diane to do the read and receive.
The motion that we approve the resolution in recognition of Lions Club of Canton for 50-plus years.
Second.
I thought women always had the right to vote, at least around my house, for 49 years, but great presentation, Emery. Thank you. This resolution is a recognition of the Lions Club of Canton for 50-plus years of service to the Canton community. Whereas the mission of the Lions Club International is to empower volunteers to serve the communities, meet humanitarian needs, encourage peace, and promote international understanding through Lions Clubs proudly living the motto "We Serve." And whereas in June of 1968, the International Association of Lions Clubs granted a charter to the Lions Club of Canton, fully constituting them as a local club. And whereas over the last 50 years, the Canton Lions Club is proud to be a charity organization that has raised hundreds of thousands of dollars to benefit the sight and hearing impaired in the Canton community through donations for free eye exams, eyeglasses, and hearing aids to those in need, high school and college scholarships, as well as funding leader dogs. And whereas the Canton Lions Club give to many charities, including Leader Dog for the Blind, Lions Hearing Center of Michigan, Eye Eversight Michigan, Paused with a Cause, First Step, Seedlings Braille Books, Penrithton Center, Beaumont Silent Children, Bear Lake Camp, Canton Goodfellows, Canton Library Vision Projects, Eye Exams, and Glasses. Now therefore be it resolved that the Charter Township of Canton Board of Trustees recognizes the Canton Lions Club for over 50 years of service to the Canton community and commends them for their dedication to helping a wide variety of charitable causes. Signed this June 11, 2019, Pat Williams, Canton Supervisor. One last thing, this weekend is the Liberty Fest. The Canton Lions Club will be hosting the annual, the 10th annual pancake breakfast in the morning. So if you're not doing anything Saturday morning between 8:00 and 11:00, we will be serving pancakes all you can eat. This guy that does this for us is quite unique. He flips them, and he has a grill, and he makes the pancakes. He has a machine that runs through and drops the pancake batter, and he can flip that pancake from here to Pat Williams. It's unbelievable. The kids go nuts when they see that, trying to catch it. But it's a great event, raises a lot of money. This year, the Canton Lions Club will raise almost $50,000 for the sight and hearing impaired in our community, and there is a very need there. So, to the Board Trustees, thank you, Pat.
Pancakes are rain or shine, right? Greg's working on the shine, but rain or shine, we're serving pancakes. Okay. We've got the motion. Those in favor of the motion, did we have a second?
Yes.
Okay. Those in favor of the motion as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Now we move into general calendar, item G1. Okay?
Just so you know, it's five motions.
On G1's got five motions, okay. Several of these with multiple motions. This is to award CDBG Housing Rehabilitation Contracts. And with that being said, you can do summary in terms of, as identified in the package as opposed to each one, if you want.
You know, I talked to the clerk, and he said to him individually.
Individually, okay. If he's comfortable. That way, let's do it that way. Very good.
Supervisor, I move to award the contract for housing rehabilitation at address at Sutton Drive for two Stratton Homes improvement in the amount of $25,000.
Support.
In terms of summary, under Canton's Affordable Housing Program, federal dollars are used to pay for the major and minor repairs of owner-occupied, single-family homes in Canton. The participating families must meet HUD income requirements. Formal bid procedures were followed, and public bid opening was held on April 25, 2019 for the CDBG Housing Rehabilitation Program for this year. The bid results projects ready for board approval are attached. Two companies submitted complete bids for the five separate projects. The Finance and Budget Department is requesting approved contracts for the multiple HUD/CD/BG-funded home rehabilitation projects with both respondents, Stratton Home Improvement and Allied Property Services. Are there any comments or questions? This is a once-a-year event that we do, kicks off some, a couple folks in need getting some help.
Something with CBD. Yeah, CDBG. At our last meeting or the meeting before, and that was for the entire amount, and this is just specifically for the home improvement portion of it.
Where we're actually spending some of the dollars, or, yes?
Well, the last meeting, the project had actually come in higher. After they had gotten into it, the roof had more extensive damage than they had initially had projected, so we asked the Board to go over that $25,000 threshold and to complete the renovations properly on the home.
Also, another time transferred some money back from a project that didn't get done in Cherry Hill Village. Is that being used here as well? Was that CDBG money, or?
I don't, the, I don't, oh, that's just back in the, that's back in our pool of money at this point in time, so this is just part of our pool of money of what the CDBG program authorizes to spend on rehabilitations of homes. So every year, there's a public hearing that the CDBG is told with the Advisory Council, they say, here's how much we're going to spend on housing rehabilitation programs each year, and this falls within that allocation. So this is actually last year's program year.
Last year's allocation we're putting into production now.
Correct, correct. The next CDBG program year should be coming forth soon to the, to the Board, because it was, it was with the Advisory Council. So that would be the July 1st through June 30th allocation.
Okay. Thank you.
Go ahead, Emery.
So Wendy, how many houses applied, or how many?
They, we have a number of people on a waitlist, so we can only do so many homes at the same time. We have, only have so many, you know, only so many respondents, so we try to do buckets of five each time we do them. I think we have a waitlist of, I'm kind of speaking off the top of my head, I could be off, I think there's a waitlist of about 20 people. We have repeat residents as well who ask for multiple projects, but we always go to the, unless there's an emergency, one of these, like a livable emergency where someone's furnace is out, or they can't actually live in their home, we always take the people who have not received the CDBG money first. So we have kind of two lists, the returning customers and then the new ones, unless, unless there's a true emergency where if, if it doesn't get fixed, they can't be in their house.
If residents needed this funding, they would come in and speak to your, your department, then?
They come into the Finance Department, and there's applications. They can find applications, I believe, on our website as well, but they can come in and talk to us, and we can help walk them through what the income levels are and if they would qualify and where they would fall in the list. You're welcome.
As always, the records are all available. If any of the trustees would like to come in and review the documents, that's always welcome. Okay? So we've got a couple different resolutions. We have the first resolution. Go ahead, for those who favor the first resolution as read, please state aye.
Aye.
Okay. Second resolution, then we'll go through the next four in a row.
I further move to award the contract for housing rehabilitation on Briarwood to Stratton Home improvements in the amount of $24,700.
Support. In favor of the second motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Third motion.
I further move to award the contract for housing rehabilitation at address on Regis Court to Allied Property Services in the amount of $23,392.67.
Second. In favor of the third motion as read, please state aye.
Aye.
I further move to award the contract for housing rehabilitation at the address on Vicksburg Court to Allied Property Services in the amount of $17,707.32.
Support. Those in favor of the fourth motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Fifth motion.
I further move to award the contract for housing rehabilitation at address on Appoxima Court to Allied Property Services in the amount of $17,435.75.
Support.
Thank you.
In favor of the final motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item G2, consider award a contract to Scodeler, Inc. for the preventative maintenance program for the 2019 road improvement program and authorize a budget amendment. Two motions on this, okay.
Supervisor, I move to approve the following budget amendment. Major road capital outlay in, in the account listed in our packet for $94,963. Decrease expenditure for major roads, professional services, engineering, number listed in our packet for $94,963.
Support.
Summer, Canton Township is commencing its preventative maintenance work on major roads program under the Roads Village. Our engineer, Smalding D. Decker, prepared the designs and bid this project, which includes crack sealing on several roads in the township, including portions of Beck, Palmer, Cherry Hill roads. Only one contractor, Scodeler Construction, Inc., submitted a bid for this work in the amount of $86,330. We have with us this evening is our lead engineer, Bill Surcheck, William Surcheck, if the Board has any questions.
Go ahead, Steve.
Thanks, Pat. So one of my questions was about starting crack sealing. So, when, now that we're approving this, hopefully approving this tonight, when will that start in our community this year?
There are three major projects on Beck, Cherry Hill, and Palmer. They will fill their schedule in, and we will probably not even know when they come and do it. We may get a few days' notice. With crack sealing, they'll be in and out of these jobs probably in a day or two of each. So it's not, it's not a long-term project. They, this type of a company is going to move from job to job, weather-dependent.
Is this all the money this year that's allocated to crack sealing out of the?
For preventative maintenance. Yes.
Okay. And so, those are the three roads for this year, and then next year, there'll be other roads that we do crack. roads that we do crack sealing.
Yes, yes. It also includes, this funding also includes three subdivisions that were fixed three years ago during the Roads Program. So we're going back to those three asphalt subs as a courtesy.
I had a few other questions that weren't specifically to crack sealing, but I don't see another time to ask them on the agenda.
Additional, um.
We have one other.
Contracts for, actually, road repair, right? So we can get into that as well.
Okay, I'm glad to wait for that one, then. Okay.
We have a list, then, of all, how many residential neighborhoods have applied already?
Yes, we actually had our initial round of submittals. There were 33 subdivisions that submitted to enter the residential program.
So the contractor that's going to be doing the work, have we worked with them on any previous projects? Did we get any references for work that they've done in the past, possibly in other communities?
We have not worked with them, however, they are a known quantity. Scodeler is out of Wixom. And although we have not worked with them, they did a large project here for the state, MDOT, about seven or eight years ago. And they did what was called micro-surfacing on Ford Road. You may recall that project, where they placed a very thin overlay on top of Ford. So they're, they're a pretty well-known specialty contractor in the industry.
I think because the contract is so low is the reason we only got one bidder?
Would be speculation, but I would also say that the contractors are extraordinarily busy right now. So we only had, only had one bidder. There were several that picked it up.
Other comments or questions? Those in favor of the first, first motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Supervisor, I move to approve the purchase order and contract with Scodeler Construction, Inc. for the 2019 major road project in the amount of $86,330 plus a 10% contingency of $8,633 for a total of $94,963.
Second. Favor the second motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Township is commencing the residential local program under the Roads Village. Again, Spalding D. Decker prepared designs and bid this project. Five contractors submitted bids for this work April 19, 2019, ranging from $446,000 to $727,145. Three of the bidders did not provide all the required supporting documentation, and therefore were deemed unresponsive. Great Lakes Contracting Solutions was responsive, apparent low bidder at $524,510. Spalding D. Decker reviewed, tabulated, reviewed all the bids and recommended an award to Great Lakes. The total bid of $524,510 again from Great Lakes includes an estimate of inspection costs for SDA and a separate line item of $24,500. That's to cover the inspection costs. And then breaking out the inspection costs results in Great Lakes' construction bid of $500,010. Are there any board questions or comments?
Clerk still has to make the motion for this one, because that was?
No, we did G3. We had two motions for two.
Yeah, she did the second one, but she didn't do the.
You did. I wonder, okay, thank you. And this is going to be in two motions as well. So, Mr. Supervisor, I move to approve the following budget amendment. Increase expenditures on local roads capital outlay, the number listed in our packet for $550,011, and decrease expenditure, local roads, professional services, engineering, number listed in our packet for $550,011. Or?
And those in favor of the motion as presented, please say aye.
Oh, yeah, I was waiting my, oh, you wanted to wait on the second motion?
Go ahead, ask questions on it.
Sorry, Pat. So the, a few other questions. This is more, I see this has to do with drain, catch basins and things like that. But just in general, I noticed we've already started this work in our community, specifically the work on Hanford and Lilly and things like that. And some questions I had in my mind were, in, on the work on Hanford, it's concrete. And I noticed we're doing a lot of cutout work.
Yes.
Where we cut out and replace. Is that cost-effective if you take into account that now you have newer concrete mixed with older concrete, and that older concrete will also start deteriorating, or is already deteriorating, it may not be deteriorating enough to replace it today. But it seems like we'll have to go back and hit that section again, similar to what we saw the county do on Canton Center Road a few years ago. And then some of the older concrete that wasn't replaced started to deteriorate a year later and even affect some of the new concrete. So I just wanted to have a discussion on that a little bit.
Very good question, because it's been asked many, many times. The work that was done on Canton Center between Ford and Warren was done on a road that had a significant deterioration of concrete that was less than 20 years old. It, this technique is called panel replacement, or partial panel replacement. So it is fairly common. We've done it for many years. We've even done it in some subdivisions in special assessment districts in the past. So the comparison to the Canton Center project, we've all seen it. We all know what, what occurred on Canton Center was replacing the joints and leaving concrete that's, that's in pretty poor shape. And that was only from the late 90s. The area in Hanford we're working on right now is, we worked from Hagerty to Lilly. That's, dates from the 70s. And so leaving the old concrete that is still in good shape after almost 40 years is, is acceptable. That's a good question, though, and, and we're going to see more of that. I would also add, we've had similar concerns to the work on Lilly, which Summer and I spoke of before the meeting. So we're, on the Lilly project, significantly more deteriorated. We're going to be removing the bad areas, and that will actually have an overlay. So there'll be asphalt overlay, similar to what was done on Hagerty about four or five years ago between Ford and Cherry Hill and several other locations. So it is not perfect. I won't, I won't tell you that it is. But with the goal of our, our millage program is pavement preservation. So the work we're doing on Hanford and Salt and several of the others is certainly an acceptable technique, and it's a lot cheaper than full replacement.
Okay. Moving, I saw that the section between Lilly and Hagerty was done on Hanford. Now they're gone. They didn't continue. Are they just moving around the community, or?
Very good question. We, we specifically allowed this contractor to work on Salt and Lilly outside of the school zones for this early phase. And we restricted them until school is out for all the remainder of Salt and Hanford. Yep. So once school is out, there'll be even more orange barrels.
Two more questions. This one will show the limitation of my knowledge of roads. But what goes into the decision of blacktop versus concrete? And can you take a concrete road and put blacktop over it instead?
You can. In fact, that's what we're going to do on that section of Lilly. It is actually going to be an asphalt overlay over the concrete. So there are different techniques to do that. It's, it gives you a longer life on the road you've repaired underneath. But the problem is you do get that extra inch. Your gutter gets smaller. We've seen that on many roads around here.
So there are instances where we would consider that and, and even do it?
As far as replacing a concrete road with an asphalt road, that's a much bigger, much bigger issue.
I guess the financial model I'd have to, we'd have to look at. But it seems to me that, one, the concrete roads, the extra expense of concrete hasn't held, held up to the value of having concrete in some instances. And that perhaps blacktop is easier to replace if you have to do it so often. So I was just wondering if that was a decision we would look at in certain instances.
Well, let me give you the example of this year, because we are doing one full replacement over on Lot's Road. It was a very poor section of road. And we're taking it down to the base and rebuilding the entire road. So there will be some instances where we replace the entire road. But as we move through the next several years, we do want to look at different techniques. We're limited somewhat by what the county allows and what the state allows as they set the.
Yeah, I mean, I don't always know how to answer the question, how Ford Road is blacktop, and it seems to have held up for much longer than Canton Center Road has, and it's concrete, you know, over time. And why don't we just scrape up and blacktop over Canton Center Road? I mean, yeah, Canton Center Road.
Yes, and, and that's going to be a decision that we're going to be making, actually, in the next few months. I, I do hope to have a study session with, with the board.
Okay.
Probably in early August, once we've gotten through the residential and start to look at what are the projects for next year. So we'll have a much more detailed discussion on what we've done and what we plan for next year.
Lastly, maybe more for you, Pat, or Summer from, is there talk of publicizing the work that we're doing on the website, maybe pictures before and after and things like that?
Yes, we are, and we'll continue to do some.
We already have some up there, or?
We haven't really done pictures, but.
I mean, it would show the work in progress.
We do want to move to an interactive map, which now, if you've seen the new website, it's up. And.
Maybe let Wendy speak to that, is with Tasha, she's looking at.
Right, our new manager, Tasha Johnson, has been working on getting the maps, just as Summer had forwarded to the, to a few of us. I don't know if it's the whole board. But we, our system.
It was Farmington.
Our, our system does allow for maps on the portal. So we are working towards an interactive map, similar to the Farmington Hills, similar to Washtenaw County. We're trying to get an estimated timeframe, you know, late summer, you know, what timeframe we're expecting to hit those roads. So, so we are working on it. The new website just got up, and because the portal is, the Esri portal, which is where these maps come from, is also a new feature to us. So we're trying to learn it to make sure what we put out there, people are actually going to be able to use and understand. We don't just want to rush and get something out there, but we're hoping to get something out there in the next few weeks.
Award the Farmington Hills example to the board, but it basically, it allows you to click on a location on the map and see the work that's being done, the contractor, the timeline, the cost and all of that.
And before and after pictures might be a good PR thing. Just, it doesn't have to be every piece of work.
And the signs are out.
Yeah, the signs.
Signs are out.
Oh, they are? Okay, good.
Great.
... perspective, Wayne County, update flashes with where they're going to be, when they're going to be, and the expected time of, basically mirroring what Washtenaw's been doing for many.
I signed up for those, so.
Haven't already signed up for the road alerts for Wayne County. Commissioner Dobbs can help you do that.
Thank you. Thanks, Phil.
Canton Center Road, a Wayne County project?
Was, two years ago. And I think we'll be having further discussions on that.
Yep, go ahead, Henry.
I'm just wondering, so you're saying, so on Lilly Road, they're staying out of the school zone. So now does that mean, what does that mean?
On, on Hanford and Salt. We, we limited them near the several schools, Hoben School, the middle school. So we're not allowing them to work near the schools until, until school ends.
Okay, but not Lilly Road?
Uh, no, Lilly, they're going full bore right now.
So we get, we're getting a lot of questions on Lilly Road. I'm just wondering, do you inspect personally in between, like, right now, I can see that they're cutting out the drains, and you can see that the curves are going to be smaller because, you know, the asphalt. So do you do the inspections in between before they lay the asphalt, or who?
I, I don't, but we have an engineering firm that's out there and working with a contractor every day. Yeah, I've, I've actually been out quite a bit on Hanford and Salt, but.
Lilly Road's full bore, though?
Lilly Road, they're, yeah, they're going right now. And they're also working on Lot's Road, if you've been over to Lot's.
Has the rain hampered them? Because I see a lot of their holes.
Rain has been awful.
Yeah, because I noticed that a lot.
And we've had to work out some techniques to make sure the holes are dry. So it's been a very difficult, very difficult spring.
Seems when they're cutting around the drains and it rains the next day, that hole fills up.
Right, they fill up. So, yeah, we've, we've been working with them. It is difficult.
Yeah, I guess a lot of the residents don't understand. It is a construction zone, and it's not pretty, and we get a lot of, yeah, disruptive also. Okay, thanks.
Have a second motion. Go ahead, I'm sorry, Summer, go ahead.
I don't know if this is appropriate for you, Bill, or for the commissioner, but we get asked quite often about Lilly Road Bridge. I was wondering if we have an update on that.
Oh, Lilly Road Bridge has been awarded. Toby Construction is starting work. They were supposed to start after Memorial Day, but I think the rain has held them back. So that road, that, that bridge will be reconstructed this year. And I would add, the trail will be closed in both directions. There won't be any access across that.
On behalf of the bikers, we're not happy.
Got to rebuild the bridge.
Yep. We have a second motion here for item G3.
I, yeah, I stopped the vote on your first motion.
Very good. We want to keep each other honest. This is good. All right, so those in favor of the first motion as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
And then, Mr. Supervisor, I move to approve a purchase order and contract with Great Lakes Contracting Solution, LLC, for the 2019 local road project in the amount of $500,010 plus a 10% contingency of $50,001 for a total amount of $550,011.
Second. Favor the second motion as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item G4, consider approval of bid award for roof replacement of the low-slope areas at Canton Center Sports. Thank you, Bill. Have a good night.
Supervisor, I, I move to award the bid for roof replacement of low-slope areas, Canton Sports Center, to She Roofing and Sheet Metal Company, Inc. at 28299 Craig Drive, Chesterfield, Michigan, 48047, in the amount of $47,500, with the funds to be paid from the account listed in our packet, Community Improvement Fund.
Support.
Service staff performs annual assessments of the recreation facilities to develop a plan for repair and replacement of deteriorating roof systems. It was determined that the flat roof area of the sports center is failing and in need of replacement. Therefore, bids were solicited. And replacement of the 30-year-old roof is, the roof has been experiencing leaks in the past and it's beyond its useful life. Staff is recommending to award project to the lowest qualified bidder, bidder who was, Shayna Roofing and Sheet Metal Company, Inc. Are there any questions for Director Hohenberger? Go ahead, Henry.
So is there a lot of trouble there because it's a flat area? Are they looking to change that so the water probably drains a lot easier and doesn't just sit on the roof?
No, it'll still be a flat roof. It's just that, like, this building has a flat roof design on it. So it'll still be a flat roof design. It's just well past its useful life of, you know, it's well over 30 years old.
Questions or comments? Those in favor of the single motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item G5, consider budget amendment for the replacement of lights at the fleet maintenance facility.
Mr. Supervisor, I move to approve the following budget amendment. Increase expense with the number listed in our packet, capital outlay building and improvements for $9,300. And increase revenue with the number listed in our packet, fund balance appropriation, $9,300.
Support.
High bay lights and exterior wall pack lights at the fleet services are the original to the building. The high bay lights are 400-watt metal halide fixtures, which have dimmed significantly, and the majority of them buzz loudly due to the need for replacement of the ballast. Regarding the exterior four-wall packets, all four have failed while three have melted the lens of the fixtures. All fixtures included in the proposal are highly efficient, or what we have today is highly inefficient compared to the proposed replacements. All proposed replacements are LED. Also included in the project is the installation of three wall-mounted spotlights to illuminate the front work areas of the mechanic's bays. The replacement fixtures will yield a yearly kilowatt-hour savings of approximately 10,000 kilowatts hours and a projected savings of our energy costs of $1,000 a year. Are there any questions for Director Hohenberger?
Seeing none, those in favor of the motion as presented, state aye.
Aye.
Consider approval for.
Consider approval for lightning protection, prediction, not protection, prediction devices at Fellows Creek Golf Course and the Canton Sports Center.
This will be in three motions as well. Mr. Supervisor, I move to award the bid and contract for the Fellows Creek Golf and Canton Center Sports Center lighting prediction and warning system to Thor Guard, Inc., 469 Rahmard Drive, Springfield, Ohio, 45502, in the amount of $27,260.
In order to keep, continue to keep safety a priority.
Lightning prediction and warning systems need to be upgraded at Fellows Creek and the Canton Sports Center. These systems are pertinent to, for the safety of the residents and the attendees partaking in outdoor sports and activities. Thor Guard, Inc. was the sole contractor to bid a total amount of $27,260 for both projects, with Fellows Creek Golf Course costs at $13,770 and the sports center costs at $13,490. Are there any questions for Director Hohenberger?
Avengers being over, Thor's going into lightning protection?
Questions or comments? Those in favor of the first motion as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Second motion.
Mr. Supervisor, I move to approve the following budget amendment for Fellows Creek Golf Course: increase expense with the account listed in our packet, capital outlay machinery and equipment for $13,770; decrease expense with the account listed in our packet, transfer to fund balance $13,770.
Support.
Thank you.
Those in favor of the second motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Third motion.
Lastly, I move to approve the funding of Canton Sports Center in the amount of $13,490 from the account listed in our packet, Community Improvement Capital Outlay Buildings. Thank you.
Final motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, item G seven, consider approval to amend the budget by increasing revenue, increasing expenses for the senior center donation.
Supervisor, I move to approve the amendment to the budget to increase revenue by $10,000 for senior donation account number listed in our packet, and increase expenses by $10,000 to the account listed in our packet, Capital Outlay Buildings and Improvement.
All support.
Okay, as a memorial to their father, Mr. Ahmed, the family would like to donate funds to add a patio off Parkview Room at the summit in their father's name. In order for leisure services to accept this generous donation and complete the, an item on our master plan, a $10,000 budget amendment is necessary. Mr. Ahmed was a longtime active member of the summit who had a passion for swimming, helping the needy and living a healthy life. As a tribute to their father, Mr. Ahmed's children want to keep his memory alive by contributing to the summit. Therefore, a donor fund was created with the Canton Community Foundation, where the family will donate on an annual basis to benefit Canton Leisure Services programs, scholarships, and amenities. The first project the family would like to fund is a memorial patio at the back of the Parkview Room outside the senior center. That includes raised garden beds and a personalized plaque in their father's name. The cost of the project is $10,000. And is there anything, Greg, you would like to add?
Just summarized it well, but it's a very generous donation by the family. They want to have the legacy of their father live on and have a memorial, permanent memorial, and it lines up well with a, a project for a patio area outside the back of the senior center that we've had on our master plan, but it's been unfunded for a number of years, so this will provide a, a great amenity for the seniors. It's going to have a raised gardening bed in there, and one of the other passions in Mr. Ahmed's life was donating to the food pantries. So what we're going to utilize those gardens for is to grow vegetables, and then all those vegetables will be donated to the local food pantry as well. So it kind of meets his health and wellness mission as well as his food pantry mission for the family.
They've been very good to work with at Canton Community Foundation. I know Beth and you have talked to them extensively.
Is this Muzamel's father?
Yes.
Okay, we should bank him or, you know.
Yes, absolutely, absolutely.
Have other projects like that, that we were looking to fund, other patio areas, or?
Don't believe we have.
That's a loaded question for them.
We have a lot of projects, but I don't believe we have any patio areas like that.
Only patio one area?
Right.
I've seen some communities where they have, I'm sure you know about this, different people donate different bricks. It's pretty neat.
Bidder with seat replacement, perhaps?
Correct, yeah, we'll be doing a.
There are other top opportunities for folks in the community to get involved if they would like to.
And I should note that we do plan after the construction of this project. It'll be actually a short project. It'll only take about a week to construct this. We will be coordinating with the family to do a dedication and ribbon-cutting type ceremony, so we will certainly invite the board to that event. Once we coordinate that with several of the family members are out of town, so we need to coordinate a date with them for that. So we'll follow up with all of you once we have those dates.
Favor the motion as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, consider the purchase of interactive, oh, G eight? Yes, absolutely. Josh would not be happy if we drove past that one. Chris is with us this evening as well. Consider the purchase of BRICS station alerting systems for fire stations one and three.
Supervisor, I move to approve the purchase of BRICS station alerting system for fire station one and three from BRICS, Inc., in the amount of $30,000, utilizing funds budgeted in the 2019 Fire Capital Outlay Account. Thank you.
Purchase of the BRICS alerting systems for station one and three again. BRICS is the sole proprietor of the system, is currently the only alerting system that works in conjunction with department's Clemis dispatching software. Furthermore, BRICS is a state-of-the-art system that provides a full solution for station alerting that includes real-time alerts of fire and EMS calls, a 1080 pixel display of incoming calls with map locations, job descriptions, and turnout timer. The system also includes head smart ramping, audio alerts, tones, and unique tones, and light bars designated for types of calls. The department has decided to hold off on purchasing the equipment for station two until the new facility is up and operational. Are there any questions for Director Stockline, Chief Stockline? Seeing none, those in favor of the motion as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Consider the purchase of interactive presentation equipment for the emergency operations center and police training room.
Mr. Supervisor, I move to approve the purchase of interactive presentation equipment for the emergency operations center and the police training room in the total combined amount of $27,978, utilizing funds budgeted in the 2019 police and emergency management budget.
Public Safety Department is requesting a purchase interactive presentation equipment from Operation Center, EOC, and the police training room. Pro Video currently has a three-year contract with the township to provide audio/video services, and has quoted the $11,941 for the training room and $16,037 for the EOC. Are there any questions for Director Meyer this evening? Seeing none, those in favor of the motion as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Consider amendment to and approval of Operations Policy six, O dot O six, to allow for web postings.
Supervisor, I move to approve Operation Policy six and the proposed amendments listed.
Support.
Clerk Segras was here. He would be very proud of this resolution. Number Anthony came in, and they came up with, under the current state law, let me go ahead and read this, it's a wonderful cost savings idea. The clerk's office would like the option to satisfy the legal requirement for publishing the proceedings of the township board electronically. The charter township under Act MCL 42.8 requires the township to determine the method of publication. As a result, we are asking the board to review Operations Policy six and propose text amendments would allow for this change. The legal publication operations policy was used or issued back in June 1st of 2002 and has been amended or reviewed numerous times since. It was created to establish the guidelines for submitting legal notices and publications. And I don't have in here, but I am aware that this is a, a nice little savings annually for us by making, employing this change. Are there any questions for Director Trumbull?
So, where would we not be publishing anymore? Would we still publish in our normal ways and the website, or?
I could translate. What the law change allows us to do is put in summaries, as opposed to, we've been putting our full minutes in and paying for a lot of inch lines, which Susan will understand completely, but the, yeah, so it's going to reduce the cost of our monthly postings, because we only have to put in the summaries by state law.
In the newspapers?
Right, as well as offer a link to come back to the township site to see the full-blown minutes if anybody desires to. Comments? Those in favor of the motion as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. And give the folks in the clerk's office an attaboy when you see them for doing that. Attaboy's, gentlemen's. Okay, item G 11, consider approval of mailing to promote permanent absentee list.
Supervisor, I move to approve the purchase of postage, postage estimated in the amount of $11,337.14 and all other costs associated with the permanent absentee list application project as presented up to $17,000. Thank you.
Office would like to promote accessible voting in community in regards to legal changes passed in the proposal 18-3. These recent changes allow any registered voter to obtain an absentee ballot without needing a legally qualifying reason. This allows the clerk's office to expand our list of individuals that automatically receive applications for ballots. The clerk's office would like to notify residents of this change and provide them with an opportunity to sign up for our permanent absentee voter list. The total cost of the project will be approximately $17,000 and can be absorbed inside the current election budgets. And this is single motion. Are there any questions or comments? Again, if implemented, there'll be individuals who used to tell little white lies about where they're going to be so they could vote absentee. They won't have to do that in the future, which is kind of nice.
When, when he wanted these to go out?
Talked about it in staff, but I don't remember Diane.
Yeah, I'm sure he's happy. Great.
I, I believe he was thinking about August.
August, okay.
About 65,156 voters. That's based on the May 28, 2019 list. And again, no dates here.
All right, Steve, question or?
Nope. Other questions or comments? Those in favor of the motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. I believe that concludes our formal agenda. Is there any public comment? Is there any public comment? Seeing no public comment. Staff, directors?
Anybody who's watching this should be prepared for some changes at Liberty Fest this weekend. It's going to be an exciting weekend, but we are having to deal with a lot of very wet ground, so we're shifting some things around. No major changes to what's being offered, but it will be moved around a little bit. The carnival shift further, shifted further north. The biggest impact will be on parking that we'll find, so we are directing folks to park at Freedom and/or up at the schools on, I believe it's Liberty School, as well as Canton Prep High School. We'll be offering a shuttle service Friday afternoon from 4:00 p.m. to 11:30 p.m. from the Canton Liberty School, as well as Saturday from noon to midnight.
Lot of the shifts, for example, the carnival is now going to be over off of where the Pancake Breakfast area is, as opposed to, a lot of the heavier equipment's going to be actually on cement.
Okay, that's why.
Seven hundred parking lots we're losing because the ground's so wet. So please, implore your friends, family to park at the shuttle locations and shuttle in, because it's going to be very frustrating in and around the site trying to find parking inside.
Not going to do the baseball fields this year like they usually do, right?
Likely not. Right now, we are planning on no parking on any grass. We're hopeful that if it continues to stay dry, we will be able to, we're going to, we're prepping to use one of the soccer fields that previously had the carnival. It's a little bit higher ground there. Where, as of right now, we would be able to park that, but it looks like Wednesday night, we're going to get a lot more rain, so depending on how that drains, we may or may not be able to park that. If we're able to park that, that'll give us about 500 parking spots there, so we'll be able to accommodate 500 of the 700 that we're losing. But we're putting plans in place that if we are not able to park any of the grass, we have parking locations and we'll be able to shuttle folks in.
For the fireworks, then, people would have to get there early to park at Liberty to get shuttled over for the fireworks, and then they get taken back after the fireworks are over Saturday.
Right, right. People do show up early. With the shuttle buses, we, in the, on Saturday evening, we're going to have four shuttle buses going, so that, I mean, we're going to have probably less than every 10 minutes, you'll, there'll be a shuttle going back and forth, so you'll be able to get a ride. The, the trick will be getting your ride out of the park back to your car that evening, because we work very closely with public safety, but they do a great job of getting all the cars out so that we have one-way traffic to expedite that process, which makes it more difficult to get the buses back in. So that's going to be the initial rush out with the buses, but it'll be a little tricky. We have worked with them. They've been great to work with to help us come up with a route that we will be able to get those buses in, but it won't be as frequently as every 10 minutes like we are able to prior to shutting down a lot of the roads and doing that traffic flow going one way out of Canton Center. So there's going to be.
Ride your bikes.
Yeah, ride your bike. We do have bike corrals that you can, they're monitored by staff, so parking will be an issue this year, but we're, we're doing everything that we can to try and make it as easy as possible, so we preach patience and get here early. Just get here super early and stay all day.
Are we publicizing that then? Because I know everybody's used to public parking.
Going to be splashed all over.
Yep.
The amount of work that's going on behind the scenes, working through the logistics on these physical moves, the public safety components, the, lot of work going on behind the scenes, and the communications piece is absolutely going to be critical, because we've trained the residents what to do for decades.
Right.
The big communication push will start tomorrow. We were able to finalize our shuttle bus plan just this afternoon, so it's been, it's been a busy week dealing with that. We had to see, secure permissions from folks to let us use the different parking lots, so we, we were able to, every parking, every location that we requested use of their parking lot, everyone said yes, which has been great. This Plymouth Canton Schools, the Charter Schools, we had a couple, Gudwara and another church that offered to let us use their, Canton Connection Church, but we decided to keep all the, all the parking at one spot to do the shuttling, so that we can dedicate all our resources there. So we had a lot of people say yes to us, so that was great. Give us more flexibility to come up with the best and safest option for everybody.
Could you tell us about the Top Gun, the one that cost all these tickets over the wristband? What's that about?
That is a brand-new ride this year. It'll be your, I believe it gets you up to about four Gs on this ride. So it is a large tower. It almost, it's, it'll be kind of like a windmill. It's got two sections that come out like a big blade that spins and has cars at the end of each, or on the end of each blade, and it spins around very fast. I will not be checking that one out. I'll be watching others.
Isn't that part of your responsibilities to check every ride?
It is not part of my, if I went on all those rides, if I went on, you wouldn't, I wouldn't get past the Tilt-A-Whirl before I was going home sick for the day. So I, I let our friendly folks over at the fire department do the safety inspections and do all that. So they, they take care, that's all about working as a team. I believe Chris will be on that one.
Comments? Call for motion to adjourn.
I want to, oh, just really quickly, I want to congratulate trustee Graham Hudak on being named one of Crane's 2019 Women in STEM.
Very much. It was an honor. Thank you. Thank you.
Being said, call for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Favor, say aye.
Aye.
Good night.